That's six forty. I ask you stand for the pledge allegiance.
On pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor Frost.
Here.
Councilor Goble. Councilor Worley.
Here.
Councilor Coleman.
Present.
Let the record show we have six present and one not present. Do we want to go ahead and make a motion and second to approval of absence of Councilor Goble?
I think he's trying to join.
Is he trying to join?
We're going to address that if he doesn't get around.
We can come back and address that then. If he can get on board, then we're good. Moving on with consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Most second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show we have six ayes with no nays, one tentatively absent. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. Anybody who'd like to come forth be heard before council. Okay. Old business, discussion only. Review temporary policy instituting emergency relief for city utility accounts.
Let's begin at page fourteen of your packet. You'll have to go there and read RCA. Brandon wrote a memo to you as councilor and myself outlining the response to COVID in relation to our utility bills and those people who have C pass due accounts. We're a little concerned because there are some people who have fairly large past due accounts and we haven't heard from them. We have mailed out notices to people letting them know that you do have a past due account. We're not turning it off due to COVID. At some point in time, it will come due and we'd like you to contact us. There are still some people who we have not heard from. So what we'd like to do is have the discussion with you and we've kind of just formulated as a starting point, a conversation piece, an outline of how we may want to try and address the issue. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Brandon and let him go into some more detail with you.
So I put together a small timeline for you to kind of review where we've been and where, what we've initially put in front of you to then decide kind of where we want to go. There we go. So in March, as you obviously know, a lot of the emergency declarations for COVID started coming down. So on March eighth, Oregon made its emergency declaration. The governor declared a state of emergency. And on the nineteenth, the city declared its state of emergency. At the same time that we made the city declaration, we also put in place a policy which put a moratorium on utility turnoffs during the, during the emergency event. So April tenth would have been our first shut off day. But we did not do that shut off because of the COVID policy. One hundred seventeen accounts would have been turned off on that day if we'd done a shut off. We were gracious for the support from a local donor who helped pay off those one hundred seventeen accounts with a generous donation to the city, which Ray covered in a previous meeting. On May thirteenth, we passed another shut off day. We had eighty additional accounts that would have been turned off. June tenth, another shut off day where we would have had ninety turnoffs on that day. And we were just recently passed July eighth and we would have, if things were normal, would have turned off one hundred thirty one accounts. Our proposal, we've, we have mailed a notice, as Ray mentioned, to all of these account holders to let them know that they have a past due balance, that at some point, the city's normal policy will come back into effect once the moratorium is over and once the emergency declaration has been rescinded. So what we're proposing now at this point is to send what we're listing as a red notice. And that just means sending it, sending a notice on red paper, very much like our past due bills as they are sent every month, to remind account holders that they have a past due balance. And that at some point, the city's standard policy will come back into effect. And they will owe both any past due balance and the current balance in order to be turned back on once their water service has been shut off. On August twelfth, we had proposed a pre-COVID shut off. So anybody who had a past due balance prior to the COVID pandemic, we would, we were proposing to have turned off. What my staff reminded me this afternoon is that all of those past due accounts were taken care of with the generous donation. So we wouldn't actually have anybody that fit this bill at this point. But we would also at the same time send a final reminder to past due account holders. Your account is past due. We need you to cover the past due balance prior to September ninth. And at which point, we would turn off any accounts that had not yet been paid. We are offering payment plans. We've been working with individuals. Many have contacted the city and set up a payment plan. At this point, what we are proposing is that we would continue to set up those payment plans, including for those who would normally be shut off under this proposal on the ninth of September. We're proposing setting up a six month payment plan essentially with the goal of having all payment plans paid in full by that March twenty twenty one shut off date.
Do we have any way, Mr. Mayor, do we have any way of knowing if they're rentals or they're just across the board?
So there, it's actually split really evenly right now. So a little more than sixty of the accounts are rentals and an equal number are properties that are owned.
Yeah, okay.
We would also propose related to rentals, normally past due account becomes the responsibility of the owner. We are proposing in this instance, the past due properties, we would send to a platoon agency and they would become, still be the responsibility of the renter.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, so Brandon, of those numbers that you showed us, how many of those past due accounts have actually contacted you? Or are those all the people who have not contacted you?
Those, we've probably received about half, about half of the accounts have contacted us to, to set up some kind of payment plan. The others, we just have not heard from. And that the one hundred and thirty one that, for July, that doesn't include anybody who set up a payment plan. Because if they've set up a payment plan with us, we're going to continue to abide by that payment plan and not turn them off for a past due balance.
The one hundred and thirty one haven't contacted you, basically.
Right.
Wow, that's a lot.
Well, I think it's reasonable since they have the option to set up a payment plan. You know, it's, they're going to be able to ease back as long as they're paying their current bill, get the past due balance paid off. I think that that's, that's reasonable.
It is, yeah.
And as Ray mentioned, our biggest concern here is that we don't want to set up account holders for failure. We don't want to, to put people in a position where we come back into a standard, standard operating procedure and suddenly they have a thousand dollars or more in back owed utility bills that they can't handle right now. And that's, that's a lot for anybody to handle in one, in one full swoop. And so what we really want to do is try to engage with the community, those that need the, the help, need the payment plans. We are more than happy to provide those. Let's find a, a solution that works for everybody and can kind of help mitigate that kind of instant, here's your thousand dollar bill.
Well, but at some point.
Correct, at some point.
Yeah.
And that's why we're proposing, essentially, they're going to have gone about six months. So we're going to give them about six months to catch up. Also, no, no fees, no interest, none of those things, just basically take their past due balance as it's related to COVID, divided by that six months. If they said, eh, I can't do six, can't do it, we'd probably consider something longer, eight months, maybe nine months.
Yeah.
I think what our goal would be though is to have it all collected and cleared up by June thirtieth. So it stays within the same physical.
Yeah, yeah.
We think that that's going to be important. But we would continue to be flexible, as flexible as we could really with keeping that goal in mind. So we, like I said, we don't want people to be, it's one thing to be generous, but it's another thing to be helping people set themselves up
Yeah.
for bigger problems, if that one goes.
Yeah.
We wanted to run this by you, make sure you guys are okay with this before we put any of it. So then if you did get questions, you would know what it was and what we were doing.
Do you want a consensus of council? We're on board with this.
Yeah, that would be great. Or even if you have additional ideas. This was just designed to be a conversation starter. If there's an extra step we should insert.
I think this is.
Put everything out through social media. I will put everything out there to communicate with people about what we're doing and why and.
I think we've been more unfair, Ray.
Yeah, I do.
To be honest with you, I, I don't see a problem with this. Consensus?
Yeah.
Yes.
One thing, Brandon, when you do send that letter out in August, will you send a reminder that they still can contact you?
Yes.
Okay.
Each letter says, contact our office, we'll set up a payment plan.
Yes, I agree.
Me too.
Me too.
Consensus, move forward.
Mr. Nash?
Oh, Councilor Nash.
Okay.
There you go. It's all right, Councilor Nash, you're not present. Is, is Councilor Goble got on yet?
No, he has had.
I can't open these. For some reason that.
Okay. So we have a, a yes with Councilor Nash too. So if consensus is, move forward with the plan. And I think it works great.
It opened yesterday.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. Something happened today.
Moving on, request for council action, the city has sweet home safety incentive program revision.
So the city has had a safety program in place for quite some time. Small gifts essentially as rewards for, for safe behaviors. What we're looking to do here is a couple of changes for the most part. Historically, we have set staff around, we do a survey, we ask people what reason we want that reward to be from. Staff spends the better part of two, three days of their account to collect them on the different locations. And then it's taken out. It's been mentioned about just doing it one Visa cash card. That certainly saves staff a lot of time. And I think some employees have even asked that, is that correct?
Yeah, and it wouldn't be a Visa cash card. It would actually just be a cash incentive on the.
On the paycheck, excuse me, yeah. So it's been requested by some employees that we move in that direction. I think it came through the safety committee. And so we've brought that to you for your perusal.
Open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, so is this something we've done in the past, Julie and Ray?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought too, okay.
In the, in the past, it's been, in the past, there'd been a lot of local businesses, but I kind of like the incentive, bonus incentive to, is to employee personally, because then they can use it however they want to like it. And not necessarily mean you have to buy something. It's more, they can maybe use it for the personal household. So again, I like it.
So I noticed when you're talking about high risk, low risk and part time employees, your high risk and low risk at the end of the thing, it said to be on regular duty. When you came to part time employees, it said you should know, okay, no. I don't think it said that. Let's look at part time. It just said the minimum hours of four ninety to be eligible. So is there, if they had just not, I don't know how hard it is for them to hit the four hundred and ninety hours, but the other seems to imply that they still have to be actively engaged employee where the part time, I realize they're only part time, but they still should have to be actively engaged employee.
That was just an oversight when it was transferred and it's, it's been changed and I apologize, you must not have got that updated. But I did see that they are required to be on regular duty.
Okay, thank you.
I actually kind of liked the gift card to the businesses just because it helps promote and be in economic development within our city. And during COVID right now, there's sixteen employees receiving twenty five dollar gift cards, fifteen hundred dollars being spent within the city, for sure. I, I kind of like that. Not that I want to add more work to the person's gift cards.
It's, it's definitely good for economic. I agree with that. So either or, but I agree with it.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, maybe we could encourage them to use them in town and not, you know, necessarily make them go to one place or the other. I agree. It would be nice to keep it in town. So whatever we decide to do, it's not.
Pay their water bill with them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we need, Councilor Nash, any feedback?
Um, the gift cards are nice, but what is, is there extra costs for having to buy the gift card versus just putting it on their check? Because we done that with the warehouse and the warehouse didn't like the extra cost of having to pay for the cards.
I don't think we've incurred any additional charges related to having to get the gift cards. It does, it did, it's the staff time is the extra cost. So Julie's and then also payroll, because there are some recording components to.
Well, it depends on the gift card too, because like you talk about Visa and some of these gift cards you get in stores, there's a fee. It was two, three dollars, whatever. Those are fees. And then there's some merchant cards, there's no fee. So depends on where you're going with, with your card too.
Right now, what's happening is essentially Julie, I get a form and I have been safe for six months. So I qualify and, and I get to essentially tell Julie where I want my gift certificate from. So I might pick the Rio, which is historically what I've done. And then Julie goes and buys the gift, physically buys the gift certificate from the Rio. And then I am given that gift certificate. So right now, I don't believe that we are incurring any, any charges that way, because it's just where there's dandy sales or Buy Mart or the point, we're just getting that gift certificate.
Well, that's the difference between the local merchants where there is no, versus I say, if you go into Safeway or some of these have got these cards hanging on a rack, those are fees, so.
Can I add on that note? I also agree that it's good that the money is spent in the community, but the gift cards don't always ensure that that money is being spent at local businesses because of just that. The employees will give us a Safeway gift card, go and purchase an Amazon gift card, and then they're shopping online. So most of the money is being spent at local businesses, but, but just because I'm buying the gift cards doesn't mean that they will do that.
Right. Well, to me, it doesn't matter if it's the first twenty five dollars on the paycheck or the last twenty five dollars on the paycheck. It's still their money and they still live here, so they can spend a certain amount here. I, one way or the other, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, so I need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty for twenty twenty as presented.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show we have six ayes with no nays approval of that. Request for council action, resolution number twenty one for twenty twenty, transportation and growth management grant application.
All right, you want to hear me talk some more? We have applied for, or we're readying an application for a transportation and growth management grant from the state of Oregon. These are typically transportation planning projects. Our transportation system plan is a bit out of date and can use an update. It doesn't cover certain areas of town as much as we need it to, such as the north side of the, of the railroad tracks. And so we have applied, this application is to update our transportation system plan, but also includes some planning for that northern part of the city. Especially to, to make sure that the, the land uses in those areas. Uh, especially to, to make sure that the, the land uses in those areas and the transportation links fit together, uh, better. Because right now, there's, there's not much, uh, planned when it comes to, you know, as development occurs, that's most of the developable land in the city. And as that development occurs, we, we do need to ensure that there is good connectivity, uh, through there. So that you don't have people going down across the tracks to Main Street and then all the way over across town and then up across the tracks again. And to make sure that there's, there's linkages throughout, so this, uh, resolution is necessary for the application. And, uh, we feel that it's a strong application, uh, we hope to get successful, but. Just would like your blessing on that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions of council?
I, I just have one question, so currently, uh, do, does the local bus go down there?
The bus?
Yeah, the one we have in town that.
Does it go into the, the.
Yeah, or does it just go up twenty and down twenty, or how does it?
It doesn't go down to Tamrac?
So, uh, the, to be honest, I'm not, I, I don't have a, a good idea of where the bus routes go. When, with this particular plan, it focuses more on streets and, and rail infrastructure than it does on, on mass transit. So, it can, that can be a part of it. My understanding is that it, it sticks pretty close to Main Street, uh, the, the bus does.
I think I've seen the bus on mall and, and, and areas of central service, essential services.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a little more information on that, you're talking about north of the tracks, that would be from Nandina down to Tamrac and Y, X, Z and W and all those streets, I don't know.
When I say more, north of tracks, I'm mainly referring to the, the county's mill property and the other, uh, large tracks of undeveloped land that, uh, that is further east. Uh, it's all areas of future development, I'm, I'm not really referring to those existing homes, however, those would benefit from this as well. Because the, uh, any improvement in transportation in those undeveloped areas would also help them too.
Well, so is that gonna, is that gonna take in Forty-seventh Avenue that goes down the railroad tracks to the river? Down by, by where, uh, radio supply is down in that area?
It would be across the tracks from there.
Okay, and then.
All the property in there.
They do, and then Foster except off of Main Street?
Um. The.
Down by where, where the school is, Foster School?
It's not really, well, those would, those would certainly benefit from the citywide transportation system plan. The, the planning specifically to the northern part of Sweet Home, what it's really envisioning is the undeveloped land that is, is all in that area, uh, most of the riverfront and, and those large tracks of land that currently don't have any development on them at, at all.
What this will do is help us to unmask and dictate part of that formula into the SDCs. Because we have to decide, are you gonna have arterials? Uh, uh, traffic camps, those kinds of things, so it'll, it'll take a look at those developments as they're coming in or what they could be and dictate numbers, um, related to what that cost might be, how we should be planning it. Uh, what kind of roads, um, those types of things, which will all be used to help us determine SDCs. So this is, what you're asking for is kind of what, you're a step ahead, I think is what I might say, is this will tell us what we need to do down there and if we should do anything. I think maybe that's probably a better way to put it, yeah.
So, Councilor Trust, you're asking for a picture to see which pieces of property we're talking about. And you guys are talking about road development and foreseeing what could be done.
So we're trying to draw that picture that he wants to see.
Yeah, but I think he's wanting to see it before you got roads on it, right? You want to know what property they're talking about.
Well, well, not only that, but I, are we talking about the, the buses and stuff, is that what you're talking about? Okay, then I'm, I'm, okay, I'm good, I'm good.
No, it's talking about, it's talking mainly about road.
Okay.
Roads, uh, and, and because of our rail line, the rail line will be.
Okay, I'm on board.
We got off base, we talked about the bus.
Yeah, okay.
Had nothing to do with this, yeah. Council, hey, Councilor Nash, anything you want to add? Or ask?
No, sir.
Okay. I need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-one for twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the director show, we have six ayes with no nays and one absent. Um, request for council action, intergovernmental agreement with the city of Lebanon and sub-grantee agreement with Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Santiam of for emergency childcare CDBG application.
All right, that's me again. So, uh. Sorry, I'm getting it the right. Um, we have applied for a community, uh, community development block grant, uh, for this project, this is, we've talked about some of the, the CDBG applications that we put in the past, one of which I can report that we've succeeded in obtaining. And that's the, uh, the Business Assistance Grant Program that, uh, Community Lending Works will be helping us with, and that's for for all of Lynn County, I believe we've, we've spoken about that in the past. One of the other, uh, lots of money that the state has made available out of the CDBG funding was, is for, uh, public service expansion in response to COVID nineteen, so some sort of public service that is supposed to help with, uh, with the needed response to COVID nineteen. The area that, uh, we, this pot of money is only available for cities and counties to apply for. So we kind of investigated what, what services we could offer, who we could partner with, because, um, when it comes to the traditional services that Sweet Home offers, none of those things really qualify. Uh, we'd have to start up something from scratch, essentially, so the Boys and Girls Club, uh, seemed like a good opportunity because they were continuing to provide uh, emergency childcare during the pandemic, and if you're not aware, uh, the state has put out guidance on what's required for childcare providers during the pandemic, and it is, it is, uh, significant, and it has resulted in a number of childcare, uh, facilities not being able to operate. And so that leaves, um, some, a lot of employees in a bind because they're trying to find childcare at a time when schools were closed and, uh, who knows if they're gonna continue to be closed, and their regular childcare providers are not available. And so, um, the Boys and Girls Club has been able to continue operating, they've managed to get some private funding to keep them going. Um, this, this grant is an opportunity for them to continue operating even longer and supplement this private funding that they've got. The, uh, state has indicated that, uh, awards up to fifty thousand will be, could be, can be granted, and there's no match for that. And so this does not require anything of the city, it is, uh, beyond the staff time necessary to apply for it and administer it. And so, how this would work is if, if we are successful, um, we would, uh, essentially work with the Boys and Girls Club to get the funding from the state to them, and then, uh, they would report to us on the progress of their program and how the funds are being used, which we would relay back to the state.
So we have no way of knowing what, how this will be split out on the grant?
How it will be spent, we, we do know how it's split out.
We got two cities, Lebanon and Sweet Home.
Right, we, now, we just know that they offer childcare in both of the, at both of those facilities. And they will be taking demographic information from, uh, people who are seeking that care. And so we do have information, we will have information on the people that are getting, uh, that are getting the benefit, it's not going to be personal information. It's going to be more, uh, demographic type stuff. Um, but we do live in a, in a interconnected region, so that businesses in Sweet Home and, and residents of Sweet Home do benefit uh, because they live and work in Lebanon and Sweet Home and vice versa. So, it, it is true that it's difficult to know exactly how many dollars are going to be spent, uh, in Sweet Home, but I, I, it is going to be at least half, if not more, because the, they, they operate roughly the same uh, in both, in both locations. So, but also there's no, there's no match from the city, so there's no actual city funding being utilized here.
And, so we can ask them to track how many children would fit this demographic in Sweet Home and in Lebanon? And their general address, like, do the kids benefiting from this in Lebanon, are they all from Lebanon or some of them actually from Sweet Home? And their parents are driving through.
We could see without getting their zip code information.
Yeah.
Uh, at, at, at the very least, we would have a number of how many, how many children are, are receiving care at the Sweet Home site. And, and so that's, that's a good thing, because anybody traveling to bring their child to Sweet Home is also either likely to live here, work here, or shop here. Uh, it's unlikely that someone's gonna drive, uh, to Sweet Home simply to drop off their child and then all the way back to work. There's, there's gonna be some kind of connection.
Well, and we're not out any money for this, this is just regionally helping with childcare and essential workers.
But, Mr. Mayor, so this is fifty thousand dollars for Sweet Home and Lebanon combined, only fifty thousand, it's not gonna be fifty for each city.
No.
Well, my biggest concern would be accountability, that would be my concern, making sure that. Okay, I've said enough.
That, that was kind of where I was leaning towards my questions.
It, it started. There's reporting required.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not like we're spending out the money.
Check, they've got a report just to meet the CDBG requirements and whatnot, so. Will Lebanon get a bigger chunk of the money, if they have more kids, they will.
Yes, I get that, I get that.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And it's likely they will. Okay, I'm, I'm done.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to authorize the city manager to sign the proposed emergency childcare CBDG um, governmental agreement as recommended.
I do have a motion on the table, but I do want, Councilor Nash, do you have anything more you want to add?
Nope.
Okay, do you have a motion on the table?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Let the director show, we have six ayes with no nays and one absent.
May I add something to this? So, we are, one of the big problems in town is infant toddlers. Or, you know.
Care for infants.
Three-year-olds, four-year-olds, you know, uh, because, um, Little Promises isn't taking them. So there's a lot of people with young children that need to find something. It's another issue, of course.
Right, and, and the burden here is that we are, we are able to apply for the funding, but finding the partner who can provide the service is the challenge.
Right.
Uh, I did a, a, quite a bit of, this has been trying, you know, when we first got the opportunity to apply, it was, it, we were basically told if this is first come, first served, get your application going as soon as possible. And so I did the best I could to find that partner. I could have probably spent longer to try to find a, a partner that would do something similar in a more focused area, but it's, it's really hard to find somebody who's still operating.
No, I know, I know.
This, it's, it's one of those things where it's the best we could do with the opportunity, and, uh, would I like to have something work out differently, probably, but it requires, uh, other partners that are outside of our organization.
Okay, I think this is fine.
Uh, one, one comment, the motion was to authorize the city manager to sign the intergovernmental agreement. We also need to approve the sub-grantee agreement with the Boys and Girls Club.
It was as recommended, so it should cover everything.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how it came across the motion. Um, request for council action, managing Oregon resources efficiently, Princeton's Moore, intergovernmental agreement.
I think, uh, Director Springling's on the line? Oh, Brandon's gonna do it, okay.
So, uh, I'm gonna go through most of this and, and Greg's gonna contribute to, to kind of the sections of Public Works, is hoping to benefit from this program. The program before you is MORE, uh, which is managing Oregon resources efficiently. It is a grant program, uh, managed by Marion County, they kind of started this and, and ma- and manage it for statewide, uh, public agencies. Um, it is an intergovernmental agreement because we're dealing with public agencies. Um, but it's a, I'll beat it off, it's a multi-agency IGA that allows Oregon's public agencies to exchange invoices, therefore services and resources. It's allowed under ORS number one ninety, um, and I will add a caveat here, this is not my presentation, this is from Marion County, so the colors and the text, that's all them. Should have thrown that in at the beginning.
I understood the credit.
So there's currently eighty-seven public agencies that are a part of this organization, likely MORE, because I don't, more. I don't know how many, um, how often they update this. Forty-five of them are cities, as you can see, but they also include, uh, transit districts, other service districts, schools and colleges, which we'll kind of get into here in a second. Nine-one-one centers and others. Uh, we don't cover that. So, this agreement, um, ultimately, what were the, what all of these organizations have to offer is potential services, and so, uh, an agency, a public agency like, say, Sweet Home could work with maybe the county, who is a part of this more intergovernmental agreement, to provide, uh, some specific service that maybe we don't necessarily offer, so for example, Greg's gonna talk a little bit about Public Works needing some help with some road maintenance that Lynn County would be able to provide for a lot less money than what we would have to hire a contractor, get an engineering study done, and so on and so forth to rebuild a road. Um, Lynn County has a, has a different method that can help the city repair some of its roads at a cheaper cost. So that's, that's kind of what we're after under this MORE agreement. So why the MORE IGA, it's generic, there is no lead agency, although Marion County supports kind of the management of this, of the contract overall. Uh, there's no expiration date, no financial caps, so if you have really big projects you want done, great, if you have really small ones, cool. Um, the program is web-based, so we can hop in there and ask any of these participating organizations for help in, of some kind, whether it's equipment or specific projects or you name it, uh, whatever they have to offer, they've put into this portal and we can ask for help, vice versa as well. Then Sweet Home would also be able to help other communities as part of this agreement with some of their stuff, that we have equipment that others don't, for some reason. Um, a few other things that they wanted you to know about this, they, we truly collaborate, they said, we've got a web bulletin board. Greg, uh, who would kind of serve as our primary contact for this MORE IGA, might be able to have lunches and chat with other organizations to get some ideas and network. Uh, but it's a, as it says, a great reduction of agencies' IGA's to maintain, so it kind of, everything's under one umbrella and we don't have to, say, work with an IGA for Lynn County or an IGA with Lake Oswego and blah, 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 blah. Um, I'm gonna let Greg kind of work through these, um, specific examples, um, and then also relay how Public Works might be able to put some of these to good use.
Yeah, I mean, we see all those examples, we can get striping, uh, we can get other types, but really, what I'm after and, and why this came to us, and I have to give uh, kudos to Dominic Valoni, who has been working with the county, uh, Public Works on a few different things recently. And it was brought up to his attention that they could do a new type of chip seal program, and, and if you guys recall when we did the budgeting, to do Twenty-Ninth Avenue, uh, and do a complete overlay and build that road back up, it was gonna be well over two hundred and eighty thousand um, with the installation of several, um, ADA ramps and improvements that we had to make. If we're doing strictly maintenance, like a chip seal, um, we can save that road and the, if we're just maintaining it, we, we can kind of um, skirt some of the requirements of installing new ADA ramps, now if we go in and rebuild it, then we would have to comply with those. But basically Lynn County can come in and do this for, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars, Twenty-Ninth Avenue and a couple of side roads off of it. And so we want to see how it works, we think it's a great advantage, we can apply. And so we want to see how it works. We think it's a great advantage. We can apply it elsewhere. And, and as you can see, there's a host of other things that, as we kind of get our feet wet and figure out what, how we're using this, I'm sure you will see, come back and talk to you about other types of things that maybe we can get out of this. And maybe eventually provide if we get to a point, so that's kind of it in a nutshell.
I, I think the other thing that's important here, so for example, one of them on there is snow, ice, storm and emergency response. Um, a couple of years ago, Public Works had a, a grader, is that right?
Yes. We didn't have any.
We didn't necessarily have the proper tools to attack that storm and to really be able to get a whole lot of headway and get ahead of it. This is something we could have utilized. We could have utilized this, maybe Lynn County could have come out and helped with, with plowing some of our roads, um, you know, because they'll do the county roads, but without something in place, they're not necessarily going to do city roads, just because that's not how things work. This agreement would allow us to, to really call on others if we need some additional help. We, I highlighted in, in one of the other slides, the, the universities and colleges that are included in this agreement. Uh, and it says here, research projects, um, that's something that could be put to good use. If we have a study that needs to be done, perhaps there's a university with, with some students that are on hand that, that could do that work. You know, Portland State does a lot of studies for, um, it does population studies and, and, and a whole bunch of other things that maybe we could tap into that, that would provide us with some benefit. And so there's a lot, we think, of, of valuable contributions out of, that we could, that Sweet Home could get out of this IGA and then subsequently also help other organizations with stuff that we have expertise on or we have the equipment to do. Just kind of sharing those resources, so.
Hey, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Um, do you have, just out of curiosity, do you have any, uh, examples of some of this chip sealing that's been done that we could look at?
No, but I can most certainly do a little digging, um, and, and find some that we could even look at if you would like. So whatever you wish.
I think this is a great idea, don't get me wrong. I, I'd like to see some examples, just as a curiosity, for chip seal, see how that looks and...
Right, yeah, the secret is, you, you have to, the first, the road that you have, you have to fix any cracks, so you either seal the cracks, so there's little patchwork that you'd have to do. But then this, there's different compounds out there and different types. And as I understand it, they'll come through and put a certain compound down, lay their chips, and then they come back and put a sealer of some sort. Um, and it's supposed to be a newer type of technology that really extends your life. And, and like anything, you know, it could be successful, it could be anything, but we would have a low investment. But I think we have a lot to gain here, especially with our transportation funds being as kind of scarce as we have. So, yes.
Yeah, I know that it probably wasn't, it probably wasn't a chip seal, but I know Highway 34 has got a new concept of what they've done on their overlay on that. And I'm kind of curious, you know, I mean, they got new technology out and some of the things they're doing. I'd like to kind of see some of that.
Right, now, now keep in mind, everyone, that not every road is a good candidate for chip seal, right? We, we may have certain roads that need other types of method of rehab. And, and unfortunately, that's just what we're, the pill we're going to have to swallow. But we think this, this can reach certain roads that we can at least extend the life without the major investment. So not every road will be a candidate for this, for sure.
Councilor Nash, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, if you want to go see some examples of the chip seal, go drive Berlin Road at about 55 and see how well it enhanced the horrible road that's already was there. So I know they're, they're chip, they're chip sealed on 226 right now and it's getting the same effect, but ODOT's doing that one. It wasn't the county, but I know county did Berlin Road.
Okay.
Interesting. Now, remember, the roads that we're choosing are, you know, 30, 25 mile an hour type roads too, so.
Not for some of these people.
There still may be some logging trucks.
How much you put a Band-Aid on it?
So that's all we have. This is just a little, you know, the, the idea of the program is doing more with less and doing more, yes.
So my question would be, so if they, let's say somebody brings something down here, what is our cost from their equipment?
Um, it's based on their time and materials.
Okay.
But there's no...
Well, it makes sense.
There's no markup cost, it's, it's straight.
Okay.
Right, Greg?
Yes, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not going to have contractor markups and all those things, yeah. It's going to be more of a, a, a liking kind mutual agreement aid, but you're going to pay for those resources.
Any other questions, the councilors? Okay, need a council directive?
May I make a motion to approve the MORE IGA as presented?
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Let the Director show we have six ayes with no nays and one absent. Okay. Uh, moving on to ordinance bills, uh, nothing on first, second, third reading of ordinance bills. Ordinance number seven for 2020, ordinance number 1289, water systems in critically affected chemical area.
Ordinance bill number seven for 2020, ordinance number 1289, and ordinance amending S H M C Chapter 13.20 that pertains to connection to water system in critically affected chemical area. Have to have a roll call.
Yes. For roll call, any questions, the councilors regarding this? Okay. Um, motion in a second?
Second.
Motion second, by roll call, please, Julie.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Councilor Nash?
I hit the wrong button, yeah.
Councilor Gerson?
No.
Councilor Mahler?
No. No.
Councilor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Borley?
Yes.
Director show the four ayes, two noes, one absent. Um, reports to committees. Uh, any, any committee members or council members have anything for the committees?
I meet with chamber Thursday night.
And we have a parks meeting in the morning, first one for quite a while, obviously.
Councilor Trask, do we have an estimated, um, completion date for the playground?
The, uh...
Sandy Park?
Uh, well, Greg and, uh, the, the concrete problem is, is what's holding us up now. Are you still there, Greg?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, it's, it's more of that issue, he'll tell you that, so.
Yeah, we, we, we've got the contract approved with the contractor, but they're three, four weeks out. Um, they're going to try to fit us in with, because there's two phases. Um, we need to do a, a kind of a simple border and some pads. And then they would come back and do, uh, more of your paths and that plaza area. So we need to get that border in and a little bit of, uh, walkway before we can actually get the chips in. So maybe three weeks or so, but, um, we're lining up the chips, um, which are actually part of the fees that we paid with the playground. So it actually comes from the playground manufacturer, so there won't be an additional cost. So about three, four weeks, I'm hoping sometime after August, if not right around the first part of August. We want to get it out or we want to get that fencing down.
It's looking pretty nice. And I want to add that, uh, on behalf of the city, I want to say thank you to the city staff, the public work staff did a phenomenal job, and all those that volunteered their time of putting that together. It's a beautiful park and I think it's going to be one our community's going to be proud of for a lot of years to come. So thank you once again.
Well, I heard from, uh, I was Dominic, I think, said today, I could be wrong, Greg, that he said that they were surprised that we got what they did done in three days.
Yeah, we, um...
Pretty amazing.
They actually, the next day, just followed up with me and they sent an email back saying that they were going to credit us $1,500 just because it was, went together so nice and, um, so we accomplished what we set out to do. Keep it, um, efficient, limited staff and, and keep it moving, and it did, and, and we did a good job, so.
Brandon, that doesn't go back in the general fund. So don't even try.
Can't see what's going to go back. But the funds originally did come from the general fund, so it might go back to the general fund.
So...
Yeah, you're telling you.
You need help, maybe. So the folks that are working with the DAN for medical services, because of the COVID crisis, it's not being utilized like it was. And so they wanted us to know that, um, if the people don't start utilizing it, then we're going to lose it. So we need to get that word out to people again, that it is there and it is a resource for our community. And, um, so they'll keep assessing as we move forward, um, how much is being used. But I think because of all the distractions, people forgot that that was available today. And it's here and it's much better than walking into the urgent care in Lebanon or something.
Where's that still at?
I think it's still at the church.
Still at the church.
Anything else for committees? Okay, moving on to mayor's report, um, I won't steal our city manager's thunder, but, um, the cut the gut, I thought, was a great success. I think it was one way of bringing our community together, a lot of cool old cars. Um, I think it was a great thing. I was brought, I will bring it to councilor's attention, it was brought to my attention that, um, and I don't know if I should have bring this up now or not, but I'll bring it up. Um, apparently, we lost our funding for the, uh, wastewater, so that's something that we probably want to talk about in the here and near future. Because that hit hard and it hurts, so we need to be addressing that. Uh, nothing else, city manager's report?
First item on my list was, we received an, an email, and I'll quote, uh, the email. Lottery revenue law will not be sold and funding will not be available for the projects included in House Bill 5030 of 2019. Specifically, the city of Sweet Home wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project for $7 million. The notice went on to say that all of those items will be reviewed again during the next legislative session. We will have to update our application, which is, okay, let's be able to give them more accurate information of where we're at. We'll actually be through the project more, we'll have to invest our own funds. So I don't really think it's going to hurt us. I think the, the issue's going to be, just obviously now you'll have four years of projects that are trying to get, so it'll be a little more competitive. But Senator Gerard's office did reach out, uh, to us immediately and, and offered to continue to try and help us and guide us through that project, so. Uh, certainly had discussions with Representative Springer's office as well. Those are convenient, so. Then I want to talk to you about, and we're going to bring some more information to you, is the, uh, the project on the east end of Highway 20 that we've been in a contract with ODOT. The scope of that project has changed drastically, uh, at this point. And, uh, we need to make sure we, we bring that to you. So we'll bring that to you the next meeting. We're working on putting information together. We've actually got a map to show you how it's changed, but didn't quite have it ready in time to get into the packet, so. Uh, the best way, I don't even know the best way to describe it.
It's a really expensive sidewalk.
Yeah.
If you consider it, if you consider the overall cost of it, it's a really expensive sidewalk. If you consider what the city is putting into it.
It's still a good deal for us.
It's still a good deal, it's just not as much as we were hoping we would get.
I'm just hoping my great-great-grandchildren get this.
It's fairly, it's frustrating because it's quite disgusting, give government a bad name, quite honestly. Uh, but we'll bring some more information to you, uh, next meeting. Uh, again, cut the guts, got huge success, we were one of the stops. We were actually even in the running for best stop as voted on by the participants. Uh, I think we finished third, if I remember correctly, but we were up there, we did well. Uh, and thank you, Councilor Coleman, Councilor Gerson, Councilor Trask, even, I'm not sure Councilor Trask helped or just...
No, I didn't help. I'll admit that, I'll admit that.
But he was there. He was telling us what a great job we did and, uh, let's see, there were several really nice cars that came through, but since they weren't Fords, they didn't meet his level of expectations and he would share that with the drivers.
Yeah, right away.
Right away, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Put a lot of work into that piece of crap, I think.
Yeah, yeah. That was the main urge, by the way.
Uh, but it was a lot of fun. We actually even received a, a random email. There were some people driving through town in their RV, their RV broke down. Uh, Les Schwab couldn't get the parts in until the next day, but allowed them simply to camp in their RV in their parking lot, which might be actually a violation, but... Right, yeah.
Is still there, is it?
Security.
Right. And they were stuck here that night and they sent us a wonderful email about how great town looked and how beautiful the flowers were downtown, what a great time they had, and, uh, I think everybody feels that way. We were shocked. I know there was at least 146 registered vehicles last time I talked with Carla Hogan, and she was trying to recount, uh, I think there may have been more, three last year, I think it was 37, high 30s. Uh, the day prior to the event, we were in the 70s and we ended up with over, well over 140, probably closer to 150 cars. So kudos to, uh, to the Chamber of Commerce who sponsored the event, as well as Apple Tree Realty and Radiator Supply House, the three backers for that event. And last but not least, we received some news today about our sweeper, our street sweeper. You will not be seeing the street sweeper out on the street, maybe ever again, at least this one. Uh, we went and looked at it today and, uh, how can we put this? We're putting together a list of items of what needs to be fixed on it. And we're going to bring that to you and compare it to, to possibly seeing a new one, because it might be advantageous at this point to do that. Metal has been worn through and worn thin and worn out and replaced and welded and patched. Patches have been put on patches to patch the first patch. So we're going to put together that analysis for you and we'll bring it to you. I've got Tommy opening it up a little bit, so we can really get in there and take a look at it a little bit easier. Uh, I may even ask one of you if you'd like to come and take a look, so that you can kind of help remove it. Yeah, it might be on the class line. The good news is we paid, I think, $14,000 for it back in like 1990 something, so we've certainly got our use out of it. But there just comes a time where old horse isn't going to be put out in pasture, so to speak.
Can't we get, can we get Enterprise to sell it for us? Okay, it might not be proper, yeah, it might not be.
So we'll bring some more information, uh, on that as well, getting these pictures. You must be, you'd be shocked at how much, how many moving parts there are in a piece of equipment like that. Right, you'll see some information on that, we may ask you for some help in how we want to help take care of that, or that's all. And, uh, that's all I've got.
Uh, department directors' reports, um, I see you brought us a, anything you want to add to this, or?
No, unless you have any questions about it.
Any councilors have any questions of our, uh, directors?
Brandon?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, we just, in my, from my section, it's not normally my report time, but we just wanted to highlight for you the, the CIS property and liability renewal. Our property liability insurance is going up just under $24,000 for the year, it's a 13% increase. They, they, they told us to expect that, it's still rather large. Um, so we, we kind of wanted to bring it to your attention as an F, as a, as a, for your information point. Our biggest jumps, we last, at the end of the last calendar year, um, at the end of 2018, we, they completed a property appraisal and analysis. CIS hired a, an outside agency to come out. Uh, we took, I took them all around town to look at all of our city facilities and then they kind of appraise and, and revalue our properties. And so, um, a lot of our actual well-used buildings, Public Works, the police department, the library and both city halls, um, received 19% increases in the, in the valuation, um, or as far as the, the overall insurance cost, um, as a result of those, those property appraisals. So it's a pretty steep increase for us, um, a little bit outside of, of what we've been planning for, but. for us, a little bit outside of what we had been planning for, but, here it is for your... All of the increase is primarily related to property, everything else had nominal increases, well within the, the range that we would expect, but property was, property was the worst.
We sent this out, potentially out for comparisons?
We have not to this point, though we could certainly try to find other, other property insurance vendors. Our insurance agent of record tells me that these rate increases are not unheard of in the market overall.
I've, I've found that you, it sometimes is best to compare, because I've done that personally, and there was a huge difference between some of the insurance companies that I compared with, I mean, huge difference, so it's something maybe to think about. Any questions, the counselors, anything else?
Since Brandon brought it up, could we have a discussion on the old city hall property?
Absolutely, yeah, we, we discussed, I don't remember exactly what we decided on it, at the council retreat, but yeah, absolutely.
Well, I think if the insurance is going up on it, we should have some sort of discussion on it.
We're, we have any more, I mean, we had, somebody was interested in buying it, we've had, you know, discussion about the library, we've had, even the fire department's inquired about possibly using it for a temporary period of time, so we're...
Make a great library site.
Yeah, that, that's what we were, that's what came on in the discussion during our retreat, our training session, work session on our property, we just, with COVID hitting, we've put all spending on hold, so we haven't worked anymore on that because of the costs associated with it, kind of fallen the wayside, several things, because we put the spending freeze on it.
I like to think if we're paying nineteen percent increase on insurance on it, we should be talking about whether, where we want to go with it.
Well, I, I agree, probably library may be the, the sense of direction that they want to go with this, but in the time until that happens, we may look at, see if somebody wants to utilize this building and share some of the cost.
Or flatten it and recycle everything in it, like the jail bars or whatever it is, and just remove the liability completely.
Yeah, would be another option too, but, but you're probably talking about a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, again, I'll go back to, I know that there's discussion about it being a library, but I'll go back to the fire department, they, they might be able to use it for, we may see, we'll get, let's use it for a year or whatever, and say, okay, but you get to pay your share of...
Ferenger and I have had conversations, I think it was, I told him to make a pitch, make a pitch to us of what you want to do and how you want to work it out, we talked about some potential uses, revenues, those kinds of things, and I think we're just, I'll double check with the chief and see where he's at.
I know that from the fire department, help me out Dave, because my mind's blank, there's a, their insurance side of it too, if they have a training and they have the ability on some of that, that they get some benefit from it, but it's worth looking into, and that's a temporary solution until we decide we, ultimately what we're going to do with it, whether it's library or whatever.
And that liability insurance on that building is about eight thousand dollars a year, so it's, it's not super terrible, but still, still a cost.
Anything else? Greg, you want to bring anything up? Okay, he must be off. Guess not. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will go ahead and adjourn our council at seven forty-five. I talked to the superintendent of services, they're going to do their darnedest to get going.